Very good. I call this meeting back to order. Call this meeting back to order. Agenda item number 16, vote to submit the expression of interest, EOI, to the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, EOHED, to receive feedback in preparation for applying for the One Stop for Growth Grant Opportunities due in June 2022, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
This was a PND meeting, uh, peg.
Councilor Marketti wanted to hear this application in detail at the PND Subcommittee meeting. I won't bore you all with it tonight. I just want to credit that CMRPC staff helped us write the application. There are 10 grants you can get feedback on in advance of the application deadline in June. If you apply before, if you submit before February 2nd, you can get up to five comments or five grants feedback. And so we're submitting these five different ideas that were outlined very clearly in your memo for a Mass Works, a Commonwealth Place, an urban agenda, a site readiness, or real estate technical assistance, and an underutilized properties grant. We're hoping to apply for as many as those five in June. And the biggest one is the Mass Works grant for Hamilton Street and the parts that aren't covered under the TIP project of Foster, Central, and Hamilton.
Very good. Discussion. Councilor Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there all good? Pretty good idea, um, ideas for using this funds, except for the Central Street parking lot? The, uh, I hope that somehow we can work River Street into this. River Street really does need some work. We have a major manufacturer on that street. And if we can work some of this into that, I, I think it would be a good idea. It'd save the town some money. I hope that, uh, you rethink the Central Street. I'm not going to vote against this, but the Central Street needs to remain a parking lot. And I, I absolutely do not want to see that mural be painted over. That is, that mural has been here as long as I've lived in Southbridge. So, um, other than that, I think it's a pretty good idea. Some, using some of the businesses downtown to, for maybe artists to set up shop would be a good idea as well. So I, I support it. The Central Street parking lot is not a killer for me, but I do think you should rethink that one. So, thank you.
Very good.
Could I respond?
Certainly.
The good news is you've already applied for a grant for River Street, River Crane. So you must be speaking of a different part of River Street, possibly? The CDBG fiscal year 21 grant should be awarded any day now. So we sit tight waiting for the good news. And that large infrastructure project was River Crane Street. And with regards to the mural, that's already been approved by the town council at the last meeting through the Mott Grant. So the Mott Grant was to be able to do a juried mural at the, the downtown, um, Central Street. So that's not part of this.
Very good. Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Thank you for everything tonight.
Agenda item 17, further review of Charter Review Committee recommendations and final amendments. Votes may be taken, uh, to the council members. This is, uh, uh, in response to a couple of councils who said that they wanted some time to look over all the amendments and, and what, what has been done, the fine, fine work that's been done by the Charter Review Committee. Um, so this is your opportunity now to make any last changes that you may feel you want to make, or any comments that you may want to make. And then hopefully with the next agenda item, we can, uh, approve the document and send it to council for review. Uh, Councilor Catrona, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I have taken the time to read through this document thoroughly. I want to thank the Charter Review Committee for all their hard work. I know I'd missed a past meeting. However, I, I don't see any changes here that I'm interested in making. I like it in the current form, but I do see all the work that's been put into it. So thank you very much.
Very good.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you. Uh, I just also want to say briefly, I couldn't make the last meeting due to being home from COVID. But, um, I want to thank the committee for all its work. This was wonderful, and I want to thank them for amending the document to reflect the suggestions made by the counselors. Um, this was a really well-prepared document. The binder received everything about this whole process has been nothing but professional. I have nothing but the utmost respect for everyone who served on that, and I thank them, and good work.
Councilor Marketti, then Councilor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Overall, I don't have a lot, uh, problems with most of the changes that were made. The only one that I absolutely am opposed to is 1012-1, changing at any time during the fiscal year, the town council may, upon recommendation of the town manager through the finance director, may transfer part or any of all, any unencumbered appropriations balanced among programs within department, office, or agency. And giving that power over to town manager, that's, that's the one that I'm absolutely opposed to. I think it should just stay the way it is. It's, it's the town council. The town council is only, that's our only power, is the power of this, well, not our only power, but it is our main power, and that's the power of the purse strings. So I would ask that that one be removed. Uh, other than that, uh, the rest of them are okay. Are okay with me. Thank you.
Would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I thank you very much. My other members apologize for not being able to be here this evening for various reasons. Um, so just, we talked about this one, I think, in the very first, and then the second meeting that we had with the council. We took language, we looked back at the last two charters, of the original charter especially too. And in the original charter, this language was very, very similar to this. It might just be a, I'm trying to think if it said, it was very, very close to this, this information. And so we were trying to figure out why then did they change it? And we talked about the fact that they seemed to, it seemed that charter got changed based on the, the issues they had with perhaps a, a renegade, um, manager at the time. And so they wanted to make it stronger and not allow managers to, you know, that manager, any other manager, I guess, going forward. So, but we started to look back again at the original. And charter isn't, isn't this fluid charter? Is your, is your main bible, your main law? It's, it's policies, procedures, and other items that can be changed. You know, council has the right to do all these other types of, um, rules and regulations and measures and all types of things, bylaws. So, which is why we added the red line, town council, that's page 14 for anybody looking for it. Town council may adopt policies and procedures with regard to limitations on such transfers pursuant to Chapter 2, Section 4, 242 of the charter. So by adding, rather than, you know, rather than tying the hands of our manager and, and the finance department to be able to move $2.99 transfers and such, this gives, this in your, in the bible of the town, in the charter of the town reinforces what 242 says, which is that council at any time may enact measures and various policies and such. So we felt that it enforced the first, the original charter by doing this, by putting it straight, reinforcing where you can find this information and, and putting it, encumbering it upon the council to make sure that they put in place safeguards for this ability for the, for management to do what they need to do. And this is only within departments. This is not the transfers outside of departments. So this is your police department with, you know, taking something out of, uh, one, one overtime because then they can pay some other maintenance thing or, or piece of something that they need or an improvement. Or same with any of the departments. You've seen the transfers within the departments. They're, they can be really encumbersome for the government to move fast or to move at all at times when they have to wait for a transfer to be voted on. So I believe, as I always have to, like most of you, that there has to be oversight, and you are the oversight. But you're the oversight with the ability to adopt policies and procedures to make sure the laws or the rules, the regulations, you, this council, or the next council, the next, so if there becomes a renegade TM again, if something happens three months from now, six months from now, a year from now, well, if this passes, then you can adopt a policy that doesn't allow them to do anything anymore. You know, that it's zero, it's a dollar, it's whatever. It just, rather than saying it can't be done, it gives a council the flexibility to move with the times. Five more years, you'll review this again. Will you change that to something, again, stricter? It's possible, or maybe six more years from now. Who knows when this, if this goes through. But the point being, it comes back to the fact that your base should be strong, your foundation should be strong. What you have the right to do is decide what the walls look like, what the doors look like, you know, they open in, they open out. What is it that the community needs? That's what the council's all about, changing things that need to be changed for the running and the fluidity of the, of the community. If you stick it in like it's been, and we realize it, and then you start following the rule, because it hadn't been followed for a long time, it seemed, then, you know, where are you at? You're at transfers of $2.99 or $36.12, or stuff like that. So anyway, that's our logic. We've talked about it before. You know, as a citizen, as a former counselor, I find it to be very competent to what the community needs and to what the manager's concerns might be in the finance and, and department heads. And, and I would hope that the council would find it, you know, that they would want to work in that vein too. Just our opinion. Thank you.
Do you wish to address this amendment?
Well, partly. Uh, one is that I personally don't have a problem with this, because I think we have kind of discussed this at length for months and months now, in various forms. Um, and I think the idea of being able to have us adopt these policies, to do these things, is the kind of control that I think Councilor Marketti is very concerned about, and he's rightfully concerned about it. Um, I don't think it necessarily means that we have to do every single, you know, every single T getting crossed and I getting dotted, as long as the, as long as we get the data that we need to know that it's being done right. That was one of the issues that we had had in the past, where we weren't getting the data that it was being done right, because it wasn't. Um, and that was, I think we were both, we were both concerned about that for a while. Um, and it's, but it is now getting done right, and we need to make sure it stays getting done right. And granted, that can change from person to person because different styles of, you know, of managers are different, and that's, that's understandable. But the, the actual question that I had is, is also beyond this particular item. Um, I, since I have the floor, if you don't mind my going beyond that. Um, I was concerned about how we're going to lay this out in terms of assuming we vote on it and we approve it, and it goes through council and comes back. How are we going to lay it out as ballot questions? Because I think it should be split up, because I don't think we should be voting it as one, one really long ballot question. I think we should probably try to break it up in, in several ballot questions, the most important parts of them, and then maybe have one catch-all that's all the little changes. I don't know how, I'm not, but I'm not sure how we would go about doing that. So.
I think.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, Councilor Lozlo had his hand up next.
Uh, to the previous speaker, I thank you very much for your volunteer work on the charter and along with your other members. Um, I disagree with the 1012-1 because when I first, they're going to get re-involved on council, there was a big discussion over a forklift. And that's what created to me a lack of oversight where people down in the ranks, department heads or manager, were transferring within the budget. And there was a rule for this and a rule for that. I think that the charter is a living, breathing document that should not create a transfer to a policy. It should make the statement. It should be, I, I was under the, first time I was a council, I was under the real strong man, town manager, former government. And the town manager had duties and council duties were diced up differently. And then as the charter got evolved and was altered and amended, um, powers were taken away from the manager. Now, I personally think that when I look at something like this, I do not see Mike McCall. I do not see Juan Zain Angelo. I see that we write a document for the position. And that's why I, now this council, when someone says, I love when they say, you want to, you want to transfer it $2.50? Put it on agenda. It's a big deal. We've been rolling through the agendas, subcommittee. We, we've been, it's a holdup on finance. And if there's a need for a special meeting, subcommittee's had a special meeting, we got it to council, or we went over subcommittee and went directly. So I didn't, I don't see any slowdown outside of council wants to relinquish its powers again. But I think it's very important to be in the charter, not so much in policy. The charter is like the constitution. If you want to give up your power, you can give it up. And then you're going to write it in over here. That doesn't make any sense to me. It's just the way I am in government. The charter, the charter should be strong and decisive in, in these areas. One thing I always hated was when a charter commission got together, like Charter Commission 2, uh, Committee, and they put gray areas in. Like, it used to say, number seven out of 13 will, will be the vote. That's the majority. And they put the number seven in. And then number seven are taken out. We had a 13-member council. To me, then everybody says, okay, certain amount of people don't show up. What is the number? The majority of what's there? Or the majority of the council, in this case, it's nine, it's five? Well, because it's non-mentioned, it gets washed out. People now have to revert to parliamentary procedure, which is simple, the majority of who's there. Is that the intent of our charter? Or should it have been the majority of the number of the government? I personally think it's the majority of the number of the government. And that's, if we're nine, we need five to confirm. If there's five people, you have a quorum, all five have to, have to justify it. That's the way it used to be. There were less gray areas in the original charter. And I spoke to the guy that wrote it back then, and he said, if you create gray, you create a problem. If you create transfer from here to go make a decision over there, like a policy, it's the wrong route to take. So when I learned about charters and government, I felt you need to keep it as black and white as you can, allow for management to work, but not just open the barn door. And then all of a sudden, you're gray and gray. Oh, no, it's in policy. Go look at the policy manual. Go ahead. Pick your charter up, understand the duties of the council and the duties of manager. They're quite different. That's my opinion on, on that one. I wanted to bring up was, and I, I wish we had more time to go back to subcommittee. I mean, it took a while to get this document in front of us. I thought we should have had more time to, to work on this. But did anybody consider any type of residency clause for any department heads or anybody? Did we ever embark on that?
Um, it wasn't in the charter originally. I think we touched on it. It was not in the charter, and I think we kind of just broached it amongst ourselves, but we really didn't, um, we didn't, we didn't put that in. It wasn't a suggestion made by any counselor. We only saw a few counselors in the year and a half that we met. There was plenty of opportunity to send us an email or, or have us discuss to bring it up, like some counselors asked us to bring up things like the Capitol.
And maybe I should have brought it up.
So you could have brought it up. We, I, personally, I wouldn't have recommended a residency per se, I mean, maybe a distance situation within a certain area. I'm not sure if I would say it had to be in Southbridge.
Mike.
Maybe the town manager only, but even then, the way, the world has really changed a lot. And I just don't see how saying one specific, I'd love it. I think it's a great idea. I just don't know if it's as feasible. Again, my own, that's only my opinion, Counselor. I don't disrespect your opinion. I, I wish I could agree with you 100%. I just can't personally. Doesn't mean personally.
This is not so much my opinion that I'm bringing forward. We are a representative of former government. We are supposedly representing the people. If anybody talks to anybody on the streets of Southbridge, in the businesses, and out and about, they want a residency clause on department heads. They want them to live in town. If they're going to make the decisions for the town of Southbridge, they should live here. They should feel the burn, not get in a $60,000 SUV and drive to another town that we're paying for. So this is the anger and the thing that I'm hearing from the taxpayer. Now, whether the council sees fit to do that, that's upon you. And for me, I think that the charter committee did a good job. Maybe I should have went to some of those meetings and made suggestions. But I've been here. I've seen the old charter, the new charter. I know where we are in Southbridge. And we have angry people out there that are paying a big bill. And then everybody just drives to another town. And they take offense to that. So as a representative of those people, I thought I'd bring it forward. And, and either you're part of Southbridge or you're not. And that's what I just want to bring to the floor, to the town councils. It can die on deaf ears. It can go nowhere. But I just feel good that I brought it up here tonight for the people of Southbridge. Thank you.
Might I just respond on that, since he asked the charter? The other thing I think we discussed is that residency clauses could be in their contracts. You're talking about departments that have contracts with you. And residency clauses is really a human resource, or is a more of a hiring situation. So certainly in a town manager's contract or in a department head, TPW department, you know, whatever it is you're, you're considering as a department head, that could be a residency clause, could be easily put there and not be as finite as in, again, your charter of the town.
Again, I reiterate, I'm talking about the will of the people. The people are going to vote on this document. Not a charter committee, not a town council. I mean, we'll push it on to the people. But why don't you let the people decide whether they want their department heads to live in Southbridge? It's their town. We're just representatives, bringing, bringing things forward. My personal opinion doesn't matter. I'm, I'm just bringing it up. I understand it's difficult to have people, some people just say, who wants to live in Southbridge? And some people are going to say, houses are too expensive. Well, they're more expensive everywhere else. I just don't understand. I want to bring it forward. I'd like to see it on here. Let the people decide. It's their town. This is their constitution. And I, I think as representatives, we should at least bring it to them and let them decide. And, and they, during the charter election, there's supposed to be informational meetings, bring the stuff out, what it is, why are we doing this? Let the people decide. I guarantee you they'd pass it. Thank you.
Councilor Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out on this 1012-1 that the way this, that I'm reading this, the finance director may transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriations. And to me, the key word here is unencumbered because on the very first day of the fiscal year, all funds are unencumbered. So in my mind, they could start moving everything around on day one with that language in there. So I, I, I feel it should be left alone, the way it's always been. The town council decides, not the town manager. Uh, as far as Councilor Lozlo's comments, if you want to make a motion, I think you should, you should make a motion if you want to change that residency requirement.
But, yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I do want to, this is the kind of thing you just don't slam dunk. This is the kind of thing that, it's like a piece of clay. You work it. I would rather see this go back to general government or whatever. We've been committed to the whole privately to, to, to have further discussion, have people come in and, and let the people do this. It's their charter. And you know, you turn around, there's, there's a mentality. It's not a wrong one or right one. Where does the powers belong? Do they belong with the manager? Do they belong with the council in the operations of the town of Southbridge? That's why initially, if you ever look at the original charter, it is the strong town manager, former government. And charter committees and councils have taken powers away. But some people think that you hire him, you pay him the big money, let him do everything. People believe that. And people also believe he shouldn't have all those powers. And again, nothing against the man sitting in the seat. I'm talking about the position. And that's a philosophical difference in government that needs more work as far as, even if we go to subcommittee a couple more times, public hearing, input, you know, as council. I mean, I think they did a great job. They brought a document forward. The recommendations are here. Now we, now it's our job. And that, that's what I'm, that's all I'm saying. Can I make a motion and amend everything? I can. I would rather amend it subcommittee.
All right. Counselor Steves, then Counselor Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually, I agree with you though, Scott. I think we should be sending it back to subcommittee and really hashing it out. And maybe, I mean, I agree, I agree that the, that the committee, Denise's committee and, and the others there did a lot of work and it's, and it's a great, great document. And I don't see us making a ton of changes to it in general. Um, but I know in the past, we have gone through subcommittees for previous charter changes. And I have no, and I think the idea, what you suggested about doing a public hearing on it is probably a great one. I don't think we did that in the last time around. But as far as, and as far as the town manager living here, that's, that, we certainly should debate that. Um, I don't know if it's necessary, but we can debate it and think about it and put it out there and see if the, see if the public wants it. Um, I happen to pull up, while you were talking about that, I was pulling up the charters for both Sturbridge and Webster. Webster does it. Sturbridge does not. And so it's a, it's a, a choice of maybe talking to a couple of other towns and see how well that works, because it, it works both ways. But I would, I would, uh, I know, I think we probably can keep talking about it, but I would also like to throw a motion out there to send this down to Jen Goff for further, for the discussion.
I'd like to continue discussion first. Their council is waiting. Thank you. Counselor Joe.
Thank you. Um, certainly, I, I commend all the work because I appointed the original committee, and it was hard to find people to do this. And I'm, I think I've had this conversation with the chairman and a couple of other individuals. This is the charter of our community that is, tells us how we're going to operate our government. And while we have the review, I don't want to rush into making changes without really vetting, and, and there's some minor things. We've had a lot of conversations about transfer of appropriations, going back for a number of years, and very healthy debate. I certainly understand Councilor Marketti's position. But the caveat on this was the council could make policy to define, how, how do you want to operate? So, so it's saying, the town manager may be able to do this contingent on whatever policy we set. So we could set whatever policy, and it could be that you don't get to transfer anything. That could be the policy. But it allows future councils, as things change, that you say, hey, you have the ability to change it. And that's, I think, the, the problem that we had when I first came on as a counselor. We had the, the opinion that was solicited by then-chairman Clements on how you could go about transferring money within the charter. And there was conversation from some individuals that, hey, the charter is the charter. And regardless of, you can't make policy. So there's, and I had, I thought you, a good sound policy because we used to do this on school committee, you know? Whether the superintendent could transfer monies, uh, no, couldn't transfer monies, and then had to come to us for every single transfer. And then we said, does this make sense for us to be able, have to transfer every little thing at any, any point? And then we came up with a policy through sub, uh, school committee that said, hey, you can transfer up to this amount of money throughout the year and provide us written reports as to what you're going to transfer up to that dollar amount. And then anything after that has to come to the school committee. Is that a sensible policy? Now, talking to the former finance director, Mr. LaFlesha, that I have a lot of respect for, he, who operated out of that previous policy of appropriations was just that. It was town manager could transfer monies, go through a process like we instituted here with the form and everything, approved, and then the council got reports. The policy that was brought forth by former chairman Clements, I think the, one of the caveats was that, and I, I don't remember all the, all the things, but it was a certain percentage, a certain dollar amount or 30% of the line item, whichever is greater. And I think I've said this before, it's all well and good for those small accounts of $1,000, but we have a police budget that I think runs into the $3 million salary line item. 30%, $900,000. That's a lot of money to just say, hey, town manager, go. We want some oversight. So what is sensible? And that's, and then I look at, I got, I got the report, and I know I do a lot of finance. When I look at budgets, we're going into February. We've had very, very few transfers. When do the transfers take place? It's usually the big ticket items during the fiscal year that says, hey, overtime for the fire department, which I'm concerned about this, if you read in this, they've used about 75% of their overtime budget. And that's no knock on the fire department. It's just the way business goes. 75% of their overtime budget in January, you're getting pretty close to that. 75% of their overtime budget in January, you're getting pretty close to that. We have to start thinking about where we're transferring money, and that's going to be the town manager coming to us to do that transfer. So very limited transfers. When do they always occur? At the end of the fiscal year, which is our busy time of the year where we start going, wow, I need to transfer here and there. So it's a good conversation to have about how we have a sensible transfer, do not give up our oversight and accountability. So I don't know what the answer to that is. I kind of like what they put in place because you do, we have the ability to vote a policy and do what's sensible. So I'm not sure where I run, but I know there was a motion, and I thank you for indulging me and let me speak to that point. Thank you.
All set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Very good. Counselor Dial, then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to say a few things. This is my first time, I'm involved with the charter, actually, new on the council. But I think the residents and the council have enough time, year, year and a half, the charter, community working on that, to attend to the meeting and change something. Either we have a couple of meeting here and a town council chairman to discuss things. And now at the end, we try to finalize it. We're going to bring it back to charter changing things. And I think the time is close to close that charter and bring it in in June for people to vote on it. If one of the council want to change things, they can amend it now, we'll vote on it. And I don't think it's a good idea to go back. Because if it's only one person review after a year and a half and decide to change one thing, now he's going to delay a lot of work. The charter community did work on it for a year and a half. Regarding town manager or employee working and living in town, example, Mr. McCall, he live in different town, he have a house, family, invest most his life there. Now he's got a job here for a few years, maybe more. But it's not fair to, to let him sell his house, move to town, and he doesn't know if he's going to stay one year, or two, or three, or four, or we're going to, you know, not agree to renew his lease, and then we let him go after he sell his house over there where he live and come living here. I mean, you have to be fair in life. It's not everything. And when we apply for, when we put out there to town manager apply, I don't see anybody from the town apply. So what do you leave? The position empty? Or you get somebody doesn't have experience or nothing just because they living in town? So you got to be fair about hiring. I agree with Mr. Lazo's view regarding hire people from town, but if nobody came in and applied, what do you do? You leave the position empty? Or you change person's life for one year, two year? Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. A number of things. I just also want to briefly touch on the motion made by Counselor Steves. I would actually think it would be more appropriate to do this as a county council of the whole or a special town council meeting instead of a subcommittee. Because quite honestly, we've tried doing things at subcommittees, like we've talked about amending county council rules and regs, and no one showed up. So I think it would be better to just put it on a night in which it's solely dedicated to itself instead of shroving it into a subcommittee agenda. Because this is such a big thing, it should be the focus of all of us, not just a specific On the transfer 1012-1, I fully support this. This is, this allows us clear language in the charter, but at the same time, the flexibility of council to deal with possibly a rogue manager, if there's a rogue manager. Or the flexibility to say, no, we have a good manager, we don't need to be like that. We don't need to be tight on the purse strings. You know, maybe there was an argument to be made with the last manager that we needed to see every $2.99 transfer. I feel like this gives us the option to be flexible and reasonable. And someone said, oh, it doesn't hold anything up if we have to discuss it. Well, it does, because then we have to wait for the next subcommittee meeting. Or if it gets pushed up to the next meeting, that could be a week, that could be a couple of days, that could be upwards of two weeks if it comes right after a meeting. So I think that this provides us enough flexibility and at the same time, provides clear language as to what is wanted. We've been discussing this a long time, I'm not going to go further on that. I don't know, I would be interested in a residential discussion. I don't know if, I would think my preference would be, again, private practice, bringing it in, maybe doing, looking at all the qualitatives, all the, you know, all the big ticket things that we need to have. But if there's somebody, if they're equal, and there's one that's a Southbridge resident and one that's not a Southbridge resident, that during the hiring process, that it'd be clear that they could be given preferential hiring, if they're completely the same across, or something like that. I would think that would be better than trying to put it in the charter and hurt ourselves, as someone else stated, with a candidate that's either, we can't find one in Southbridge qualified, or we end up with somebody who's not qualified for the role. I think we need to have a vast open poll, and we need to consider all the options, all the information. Residency is great, but it's not the only thing to consider in a hiring process. So that's all my comments to everything that's been brought up tonight.
Very good. Counselor Lazo.
Again, I was very fortunate to serve on a council where it had a residency clause, and we were the all-American city, and it was a booming town. And the town manager, Boyer, lived in town. Town manager Jacobs moved to town. Jack Hawley came from Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, moved to town. When a town puts a policy, not a policy, puts it in the charter, it's realized that, I'm not saying if somebody applies from Southbridge, you're not getting what I'm saying. I experienced that residency clause. It worked 10 times better than what we have now. Not under this guy. But I've been through some managers and the rotating, you know, the acting this and the acting that. If they're not vested in Southbridge, why do you want them here? I know that Mr. McCall wanted to move to Southbridge, his intent to move to Southbridge. He looked at houses, and with the housing blew up on him, I get it. But department heads? You can't move into the town that gives you 100-something thousand dollars a year in a brand-new SUV? And they drive to, drive out of town? And the citizens are mad about this. So I'm an elected official. If you think that's okay, then just say that's okay. Because the charter should be black and white on a residency clause. I'm not saying anybody in position right now has to move here. I'm saying, let's cut a line in the sand and say, from here on out, and then give it a time limit to move into town. That's what it used to say. And then from there, they become part of the fabric. Let them shop at Big Y, Big Bunny. Let them understand the hurt in town when we go forward and build the budgets. It's not a bad concept, guys. It worked, and it worked well. And then it changed, for whatever reason. And I'm here today just to bring the will of the people that have talked to me. Everybody has mentioned residency clause. They're angry about it. They see them driving out of town with the SUVs. I didn't invent this. But I will bring it forward to allow a Southbridge voter, I'm not going to sit here and say, oh, the voters, what do they know? I know more, now I'm going to do what I want to do. That's not what we're here for. We're supposed to be representatives. Don't be afraid to try the option. Thank you.
Ms. Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So Counselor Lazo is exactly correct. In the charter, the original charter, the acts of 1975, as we talked about, the charter did have a residency clause. He or she, he, she need not be resident of the town at the time of his appointment, or her appointment, I'll add, but shall take up residency and become a qualified registered voter in the town within six months of his or her appointment. I'll further add that had that been brought up to us as a, like, could you put this in? We're really, you know, I think there's a lot of momentum for that. That would have been a recommendation in here, and then it would have been up to you as to whether or not, obviously, that was one of the things that you would send, just like other things are at this point. And just like other things, it need not be a majority, it need not be a unanimous vote to make that decision on things. But to the counselor's point, he certainly has that ability within you guys, which we spent three other meetings at too, to bring that amendment up then and say, did anybody think about it? Let's put it in. And he still could say, could I, you know, I want to make a motion to add this to this, somebody could second it, and you could still have a vote by simple majority, as we know has been happening. I make that comment because, and I'll go back to transfers, because I also want to point out very clearly, because we did, we did do research on this, it was a sticking point. Counselor Jovan pointed that out quite clearly, even though we also had legal opinions back then too. Anyway, back in the original charter, in the 911, page 19, transfer of appropriations, at any time during the fiscal year, the town manager may transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance among programs within a department, office, or agency. Upon written request by the town manager, the town council may transfer part or any, all of any unencumbered appropriation balance from one department, office, or agency to another. So that is the original charter. And I point that out because that was, the statement was made originally, it was strong against, you know, and the manager couldn't do that. So it could, then it changed. And then, so our, again, the proposed amendment, at any, and it's actually a little stronger because here it just says the town manager. At any time during the fiscal year, the town manager may, excuse me, the town manager, upon recommendation of the finance director, so there's a little bit of a, there's a connection there. It's not just the town manager in a whim saying that some department head could do something. There was a checks and balance to begin with. May transfer, may, not shall, or whatever, may, transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance among programs within a department, office, or agency, period. And then that's when in red, we suggested town council may adopt the policies and procedures with regard to limitations on such transfers pursuant to Chapter 2, Section 4, 242 of the charter. And we added the next paragraph, we separated out what they had originally and put, because it, now it was two things. Upon written request from the town manager, the town council may transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance from one department, office, agency, or another. That's because, you know, the manager's the one, it's not the council going to say, hey, well, let's take some money out of here and put it here. Generally, your town manager's going to say, hey, we're looking like we need some funds to cover something. And that's why they should have to write to you and ask you, can this be done? And then you, as the council, can say, yea, nay, or nothing. And that would have solved the problem that came up with the forklift, which I brought to the attention of council, let me tell you. And I'm still at irks to this day what was done on a $30,000 forklift when they decided to take little parts of under $10,000 and add them all up and buy a forklift. That was wrong, it was illegal, and the previous town manager should have paid. Because according to this charter, he was responsible for those types of things. Not just the department head, but buck stops with the town manager. So pointing that out, brought it up, was, I won't use the word with a C, the man on the cross, because that would be sad, because I wasn't, it wasn't that bad. But it was pretty bad when you bring up things that are wrong and you can't get any leverage of support. So on that note, I know there's a motion on the table. I would, we, this council came three times to three council of the whole meetings. We went over a lot of things, and it's not up to us, it's up to you guys, but everybody kind of went around the table and had lots of time to sort of do things. I find sending it back to subcommittee, if you want to do it and figure it out, make a motion, decide who votes yes, who votes no, and sometimes you get what you want, sometimes you don't. That's life. But, or do it. But beyond that, you'll be having to adjust it because our committee will be over. So it'll be up to you guys. Thank you for your time.
Counselor Katronov, then Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a lot of discussion this evening, and the last couple of meetings, this is, last couple of times, this has come up. I would support the residency clause. I like the idea. I haven't given it much forethought, but I too do hear it out there in the community, and I've also voiced that concern as well. With a motion on the table, I don't know if, can we make a motion to add this? Or do we have to add a residency clause to this? Or do we have to wait and clear that motion, the previous motion?
Can we withdraw the motion? Because the discussion seems to keep going on. I'll just withdraw the motion.
You're going to withdraw the motion? All right. Well, there's no motion on the table right now to consider.
Then I would like to make a motion that we add the residency clause to charter. I don't know where.
Mr. Chairman, that's the reason why I wanted to go to committee. Because shooting it over the floor today, trying to find out where to put it, is, it needs like, sit down privately and work it out as far as what it's going to look like. And that's why I thought going back.
I agree.
So that's all I wanted to say. I got one other thing after.
You're all done?
Yeah.
All right. The counselor made a motion. Is there a second?
For discussion. There was.
Which one are we on?
The residency. For residency.
For residency.
The counselor made a recommendation that we add the residency requirement to the charter amendments. And I'm looking for a second.
Of course, I will second for discussion.
Counselor Steve seconded that motion.
Because that is specifically what I wanted to talk about.
So discussion specifically right now will be related to the residency clause. The next person I have as being on the list for discussion is Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think it's inappropriate to take up that, no, not inappropriate. I think it's inappropriate to take that motion and discuss it and debate it this evening.
Okay. No problem.
I certainly like the other motion. It's 10:30 at night, we're going to change a charter.
Right.
That reflects the way we operate our government. Now, I'm all for, let's have a discussion about it. But it's, who are we talking about? How is it implemented? When is it going to be implemented? Okay? What are the implications of that? How does it work? They have contracts, so it's a whole conversation about how you implement a residency requirement. Now, to the residency requirement, there may be councils up here that have heard from their constituents about residency. I haven't personally. Okay? So I have my own thoughts about residency and some department heads and the reasons for, and I certainly understand all those comments. My, and I understand there's a, there's a, there's a push to get it to the representatives so that it can be on a ballot. And they have to go through the whole house and the senate and readings and all that. And I've had that conversation, we, party with the, with Representative Durant and about how it could go. I think if we're going to make that kind of substantive change in the charter, that one, I like the idea of having public input. And yeah, we are the representatives of the people.
I agree.
But what's the harm in going to the people and saying, here's the charter change, we may get comments back, we may not? If we want to put that kind of item out to the public, let's advertise it and say, we're going to have a public hearing on this. If you have anything that you want to say about the changes, please come to this public hearing. Let's hear from the voters. If Counselor Lazo has all these people that are coming up to say, and they're angry, then be angry enough to come here and say, yes, I believe it should be a residency requirement. We do represent the people, but let them come. Let's see them. Let's talk about and debate a little bit further on the transfer of appropriations. You know, so I'm not, I'm not for rushing this. I agree with further conversation about residency, but let's make no mistake, there are former town managers that while there was a residency requirement, still own their property in their hometowns that they were there and rented here in Southbridge. So yeah, they paid their rent, and they may have went shopping, but I'm sure there's other town managers that live out of town that go shopping in Southbridge. But just because we say there's a residency requirement, doesn't really mean that they're going to go to that residency, because past practice, a lot of them didn't.
I withdraw the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Lazo is next to be recognized.
In the, in the spirit of discussion, I spoke to the original author of the Southbridge charter, on behalf of Florence Chandler. I was chairman of the council, and I asked them, there's a residency clause written into our charter. He goes, residency means you have to live in the, this is the lawyer that did the charter, has to live in the town of Southbridge for X amount of days to consider it residency. Florence Chandler went over to the condos, bought an $80,000 condo, lived in Southbridge five days a week, and went back to her hometown. Because she was a selectman in that town, she had to step down as a selectman because her residency now, she used a domicile, they called it, and the lawyer approved it. That's the one Mr. Jovan's talking about.
Point of clarification? Clay Collyl rented from Chief Laporte. Clayton Collyl rented from Chief Laporte on Dresser Street.
Right, well, I don't think there was a residency clause at that time. I said the residency clause was, I think the last person was Coughlin that was a town manager with the residency clause. Getting back to the previous discussion, I too agree if, I think, and again, I commend the charter committee. They've done their job, they're done. Okay? They're handing it off tonight. And what I'm saying as counselors, let's go take a look at it one more time. It takes a year and a half, two years for them to write it up and we're going to do it in 30 days. To me, that doesn't, that doesn't, I'm not saying anything's bad. I just, if you want to go forward tonight, vote it, I'll vote no and that's it. But if you want to take another look at that and seriously look at the residency clause, I mean, somebody brought up earlier of breaking up the charter, so it's not just one big long document. And not a bad idea, put the residency clause as one breakout. And if they're in favor of it, it's in. And on favor of it, it's out. If you break it out that way, so they can read it and understand it. You put the charter on with all the revisions, nobody's going to read that. Nobody. Not inside, going into vote. They're going to vote for somebody and they're going to look at it and say, wow, what is that? So I think we need to slow down and just take another look at it and see what we can do. And when I say there's a difference of mentality, a former chairman of the council said, the buck stops at the manager. Wrong. The buck stops here. We do the budget, he recommends. The, all the department heads build the budget. The manager builds the budget. And then it's approved by who? The representative former government, the town council. I refuse to relinquish any powers that are in the charter, including that finance one. I mean, it's just a philosophy, you can disagree. We don't have to be mad at each other, we'll vote differently. But I just think we should have a little more discussion on this and I'm requesting it. If we can do it, fine. If we can't, it's getting late, I don't, I could have got an amendment and stuck it in. I'm not that kind of elected official. I'm not going to do a last minute. I wanted, I came here tonight, I was going to request more time and see what we can do with it, just to spur the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clear how it goes? So I'm not in a rush, I want to point that out because I wanted, or we are not in a rush. You've had some conversations, I believe, too. I've had conversations with our legislators, with both Fatman and Durant, a senator and state rep. And it doesn't matter, I mean, I even asked the questions about the fall elections and stuff like that. Could there be two ballot? Actually, I was told that it could be done, probably, it was a good probability that it could be done that way. So in the spirit of not rushing, I just want to point that out and be really clear. I don't want people to think that I'm standing up here representing our little group that was left and was a year and a half, but it was a year and a half because we had a few months of complete inability to, you know. Anyway, and then COVID did take a few things, a few, a few meetings off. So we do apologize for being over our October, end of October deadline, but we tried. So, and, and when I talk about amendments and such, it doesn't mean you clarify, I just meant, you seem to be all just talking a lot in circles. If you don't want to move further on one thing, you just, you wipe it off the table. You want to move forward on another thing, you say, yeah, let's move forward on another thing. I just, that's all, that was kind of the, it didn't mean, because every time we've come back from a meeting, we've incorporated the changes or different things you've recommended. Nothing's ever been in stone, nothing we're writing is in stone. Again, I've said from the very beginning, as has the others, it's yours to do what you want with it. Just suggesting the process wise, you seem to go roundabout sometimes and I can, I can watch the, you know, some people think certain things have to move, some people think other things have to move. You vote and then decide what to have a meeting on, but, so clearly, so again, as, as the representative of the committee, I think we're pretty done and you can vote us out later. But I don't have much more to offer. For logic, I mean, you can certainly ask us any time. The old, the old charter is available to anybody from the town hall, the next charter that we've been using and then with all the amendments, so I'm, you know, it's good. I think your transfer is important, I think your residency could be important, that's just my opinion. But as far as, we are not saying move forward fast if you don't have to. Bring in all the people and all that you need to do. But we're, on behalf of the committee, thank you for letting us serve you.
Thank you. Counselor Steve, then Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to quickly comment on the residency requirements. I was looking up while we were talking about it. And I mentioned, I mentioned disturbers not having one a minute ago. I just want to point out when we, if we want to do something with this, and we also want to throw in whether or not we want to do waivers and, because some, some, some charters allow for waivers, some allow, some do not, they have specific timeframes, some do not. So I agree that we need to, we need to, if we're going to, if we're going to even consider that, we need to spend more time on it and actually figure out what the language we want is going to look like. Because there's all kinds of different ramifications of it. And having said that, I would also like to throw, so I'll throw a motion back on the floor then, that we send this back to council of the whole.
Second.
For, for further discussion and/or public hearing.
I thought you guys had hands up, too, so.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Counselor Marketti, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, this is a good idea. I think we should make it a public hearing. We have not only a suggestion for a change, we have some discussions about this other item about transfers. Counselor Steve's brought up some good issues about putting this, how are we going to set this up for a vote? These are things that we should discuss. I think we should sit down and say, this is how we're going to divide it up for a ballot question. So I'm in favor of putting it towards a council of the whole and make it in a public hearing as well, if that's possible, so, thank you.
Counselor Dell, then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Why wouldn't put it on a contra or policy? Town car can leave town. Same thing like Mr. McCall said, okay, give me gas, I'll use my own cars, or give me a law. Why wouldn't enforce that on a, on a department head? The town vehicle should stay in town. They can drive their own vehicle to town and then use it, the town vehicle during the job time and then they live in their own car. Not necessarily like, I believe when you enforce people to move or living in town to get a job, it's more political empower to take control thing. What happened in the past, that's why the town kind of in shake position right now. I don't see why keep it, people can work from out of town if it's qualify and then don't just give them a car to go home with it. Don't buy them new car. Take it off the contra. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Ryan.
I liked the suggestion from Ms. Clements that maybe this could go on a fall ballot. I think that might be actually really good as a possibility to discuss because that means more people, talk about the well of voters, more people have the opportunity to vote because more people vote in those big elections than they do in the town one. So that's something to consider and I support the move to have this discussion further on another night at the council of whole. Thank you.
Very good. Is there any further discussion? Dear Vigan, let's vote on the motion, please. All those in favor of sending this, I'm sorry?
To amend?
No, all those in favor of sending, of sending this discussion to the council of the whole for discussion and/or a public hearing?
Okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Very good. I believe I need to entertain a motion to pass over eighteen.
Make a motion to postpone, after it comes back from council of the whole.
Any discussion, there being none? All those in favor?
Was there a second to my motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Counsel Alauzo. Anyone opposed?
I just, the only reason I'm opposing, I'd like to know more about it. Why are we passing over it?
Because we've moved the, we've moved to, there's nothing to send at the council of the whole. There's nothing to vote on.
Oh, okay, sorry. I got it wrong. I had a senior moment.
Do you wish to vote in favor of that? Okay, eight oh. Item number nineteen, vote to approve the amendment to the contract between the town of Southbridge and Castle Booz and Associates, KBA, in the amount of $1,786,000 for phase two services for the design through construction and closeout for the construction of the fire station and allow the town manager to sign all documents approved by the fire station building committee on January nineteenth, 2021, to be sent to town council for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, town manager can also elaborate on this. This is the next phase for the fire station design and construction of the approved project. This has been vetted by not only the fire station building committee, but it has also gone through with our onus project manager to make sure that the scope that was correct. It's been evaluated, it's within our opinion of probable costs for the project and the town, all it is, is Castle Booz was the original architect that we had selected for the feasibility study. And when we did that, we had the opportunity to be able to move to the phase two if the towns are fit, that it was in the best interest of the town. The fire station building committee felt it was in the best interest of the town to continue on phase two with Castle Booz and as such, that is the scope of their services. So at this point, it's to get them on board to be able to continue some preliminary work until we secure the properties and work through that process.
Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything else to add on that?
Through you.
If I may, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to Fire Station Building Committee Chairman Jovan's question, the only thing I would add is when the original design services were procured, there was the option to exercise and use Castle Booz for phase two, which we're in now. And the recommendation when you do that is to have an independent review of the costs. And that was done by our OPM and that's the memo that's included at the end. And again, it does come back within the opinion of probable costs. It's underneath the $1.8 million that was estimated previously when they, they looked at this. So based on all that, I would concur with Chairman Jovan in the fire station that we move forward. Fire station. Building committee's assessment, excuse me, I forgot to put that. It's getting late, I'm having a seeming moment, too. I'm a little young for it, but.
Any discussion? Counselor Katrona.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. And I know the town manager's going to expect it from me, but I do assume that you've read through the contract thoroughly.
The, the existing contract wasn't in place, I deferred to the OPM for that. I have not read the existing contract from 2017. This is just an amendment to, it was previously approved, so I did not go through the 2017 contract, so.
If I can continue, something that caught my eye is, it says the proposed fee is based on our current understanding of the required scope of work and specifically does not include any environmental studies, surveying, specifying any procurement, radio communications, or infrastructure. That caught my eye as an engineer and one of the first things that you do on any project is an environmental impact study. And I guess I don't understand why it's not being done. And just to read you from a course, from the course book, the main objective of an EIA is to ensure the potential impacts are foreseen at the beginning stage of a project designed and addressed before any concrete decisions are taken, including financial decisions. And that's from the 2018 guidebook. So I guess I don't understand why we're pushing this forward before we get involved with the, with the environmental impact studies. They include numerous concerns. I won't bore you with them now, but I see Counselor Jovan wants to speak to that and then I'll see if I can have the floor again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Jovan.
So I, just to clarify, are you concerned about the environmental assessment and who's overseeing that?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Are you concerned about the environmental assessment and who's overseeing that process? That's being overseen by our onus project manager that we have on base. So we already went out and secured the services of an environmental assessment firm, that was done at the last council meeting, that's being handled under our onus project manager that represents us, the project manager.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, so that's, that's being, that's being addressed by that and the conversations, and I think the deputy chief can attest to the radio communications, that is just something that is typical of these projects, that the radio communication systems are designed by different engineering because of the scope of that project. But it would be overseen by our onus project manager. So we have project management on that's overseeing those services, but they wouldn't be done as part of the architectural design of the project.
Speak to the counselor. Just, again, my concern is before we allocate any, before allocating any funds, are we, is there going to be an environmental impact study?
Yes.
Prior to this council allocating any funds?
Yeah, it's part of, we've already, we've already hired the vendor to go out and do the environmental assessment.
Okay, that's what I missed that then, Counselor.
Yeah, that was done at the last council meeting.
Okay.
That we hired the, so we went out for request for proposals for appraisal services to appraise the properties. We went out for RFQ, RFP, to do environmental assessment. That environmental firm has been contracted to do that. We've already secured, I think, the licenses for us to be able to go on the properties, to be able to do those studies. This is the design part of it, so that's, we wouldn't do, we wouldn't go into full design until we actually secure the properties and make sure the environmental's on board. So this is just to get their contract on so they can do some preliminary work.
Thank you for clarification.
Alauzo? Any further discussion? Counsel Alauzo?
I'd just like to comment, Castle and Booz, outstanding pick. They did the police station, did a great job.
They also did Bay Path.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So looking at this, I think this is a $20,000 increase over the original probable costs.
Opinion probable cost was 1.8 million, this was underneath it, I believe. I thought it was $20,000 underneath, is that not correct? $14,000 underneath?
Because I looked at the schematic design and it was 265 here and here it's 285. So that's.
Well, I think you have to look at the total cost. We're talking about total cost is below, so there's entire services is below the original.
I did add it all up, the full, full design and construction, I added all these totals up and it came up to exactly what you have here, $1,786.
Right, they may have reallocated what they're spending on what, when they fine tune their costs, but it's, it's within the, the scope of what the opinion probable cost would be.
Okay. And the $50,000 for furniture, fixture, and equipment, additional service, the $50,000 for additional services to design furniture, fixtures, and equipment, is that going to be coming out of the $400,000 that's set aside for furniture, fixtures, and equipment? Is that going to be?
I believe the design for furniture and fixtures is all that, is for them to design the part of making sure that everything fits in the space that it's supposed to be at. So you'll have gym equipment, they have to design the space, make sure everything's plotted correctly, desk and things like that, and then you'd have to buy that outside furniture.
And is that going to be coming out of the furniture?
The furniture would come out of furniture, I would believe.
Account that you have here? All right?
I believe so, yeah.
And now, if I recall the last meeting, your Pomeroy and Associates?
Correct.
They did not want to go any further until we absolutely have secured the land, have we, have we assessed the land, have we done the environmental study? Do we own, even own the land yet? So are we jumping ahead here or?
No, it's a parallel tracks. So it's parallel that they have to work in, within, they have to start looking at the site. We know that's the preferred site.
Right.
Okay? They have to look at the, the initial design, continued work, they've already done work with the chief to make sure that the scope of, of making sure that everything fits the way that we want it to fit, what changes in building codes and all that. So they're doing the preliminary work, but they're not going to get into design, actual design, until we secure the properties.
All right. And the last. And the last thing is, you know, we still have not bonded for this, I take it, so this is going to be based on the bond. We're not spending anything until we get this bond going, right?
Correct. I did have a conversation on Thursday evening with Ms. Harnoyes about this, and she had had conversations with the Town Manager about it already to say, and I anticipated the question, and she said, again, she said, we have no bills yet, but we would either short-term notes or, or, actually, the joke that I had in her office was, I'm going to take it out of your road account right now until we appropriate money. But that was a joke, Counselor. I said, I was going to say that at the council floor, that we're taking it out of your road money first. So, no.
That's a good one.
Huh?
That's a good one.
That's a good one? I'm glad you can laugh. So, and I don't know if the Town Manager's had further conversation with Ms. Harnoyes, but I have been in contact with her to make sure that we are doing that.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. We are scheduling to do the appraisals and trying to get the environmental assessments We haven't acquired the land. It is a process. Ultimately, this body has the ability to take land by eminent domain, but the preferred way to do this is to reach negotiated disposition. So the reason we do the appraisal and the environmental assessment is twofold. One, so that we know what we're getting, and to Counselor Katrona's question, you know, you want to make sure you know what you're going to be building on, what's underneath. But we want to be able to approach these people and hopefully in an amicable setting, reach an agreement on these properties. So we're following the guidelines. I have a memorandum that's outlined on the best approach to handle this. I'm willing to share it with the council so you have a better idea of which direction we're going with this. But as soon as we get the appraisals done, the environmental assessment done in the area, then we would be going back and sitting down with these folks and trying to negotiate and then come back. I've talked to our town treasurer. Once we get the cash flow statement from the OPM, we'll be looking at doing probably a bond anticipation note in advance of a full borrowing for the full amount. So we're working on it all concurrent with all the other activity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any unanimous of all present?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Jovan.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add an agenda item 19A that the Town Manager had alluded to earlier, which would be discuss the submission of the SAFER Grant, which I had that.
Second.
Wait a minute, which is the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response by the fire department for the FY 2021 period and take any action on same. That's my motion.
We have a second. Very good. Chief.
No, you have to make a, you have to take a vote to suspend the rules. So you have to vote to add it to the agenda.
I'm having my moment, too, I guess. We're all there. Okay. We have a motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Very good. Okay, we have a 19A.
I make a motion regarding the submission to submit the SAFER Grant by the fire department for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response for the FY 2021 cycle. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Could I just add, and allow the Town Manager to sign any documents?
Very good. Okay.
As usual.
All those in favor?
No.
I'm sorry.
This is discussion.
Trying to push it through.
Unless you want to submit it. No, there we go.
Okay. Chief.
Just a footnote, we did not take this to the committee. We ran it straight to the council because we've already went through this, and we hashed this out. We know what it is. We're just, you know, we're going to reapply.
Very good. Chief.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know the chief had pointed this direction to Counselor Lozlo's point. I did call him last week. I was trying to get this on the agenda at the last minute. The chief had notified me a week ago Friday about this issue, and we tried to schedule a meeting with the finance director, and the first available opportunity we had was Wednesday. So once we reviewed it and discussed going forward with this, I tried to get the wheels in motion. But as you know, we had a bunch of things going on Thursday, and I just was not able to get it on the agenda before it was posted. So I just, again, appreciate you taking the opportunity to hear this out. The application date closes February 4th. This is very important to the chief. We've applied for it. I say "we," the town has applied for it in the past. Unfortunately, they were passed over yet again. And with that, I'll leave it to the chief and the deputy to tell you all about it.
Very good.
So thank you, everybody. It's late. I did have four pages to read, so I'll read really, really quickly. And then the deputy has put some slides together to give you a little bit of data behind what we're going forward. Most of you have been here the last couple of years when we've done the SAFER Grant. The Southbridge Fire Department, I conducted a research to determine adding a seventh member to each of our four working groups. The research was to evaluate several key issues related to staffing requirements for the delivery of fire emergency medical service to the town. The fire department and indeed the community it serves needs better response times with our own manned equipment. Recent changes to include lower on-call members' availability and interest in even becoming a fire are apparent. Also, the callback system that we've had for many, many years in regards to off-duty firefighters has been less than functional for more than 50% of the time over the last several months. This has caused the fire department to be unmanned until the crews that are on calls clear up and return to the service area. I have particularly focused on EMS staffing numbers and response times. The conclusion of this information will show that Southbridge Fire Department is not adequately staffed compared to national standard, national protection standards, NFPA standards. Benchmarking of similar communities and other related studies, as such, the recommendation is the department needs four full-time firefighters. The fire department budget currently that we're in right now is, has been approved for $2.59 million, which was a 2.8% increase last year when we all put the budget together. Most of that increase was also collective bargaining agreement information. These funds are drawn solely from taxation. The tax rate is roughly $4 per thousand to add these employees. The town collected $1.24 million in ambulance receipts last year. Those funds also go back to the general fund. The department, to operate the standards set forth for NFPA 1701, we have surveyed other smaller local departments around us. Charlton, right now, currently staffs four members per shift, and they do about 1,890 calls per year. Dudley has two to three members per shift, and they do about 1,760 calls a year. Sturbridge has three per shift, and they do about 1,600, 700 calls per year. The Southbridge Fire Department is doing triple the call volume. The deputy will update the slides, actually will give us some information on the slides on our call volume, but roughly when I put this information together, it was 4,100 calls for service. Transports that are really affecting us right now are the transports that we go directly to Worcester. The advancement of EMS has allowed ambulances to transfer to further hospitals with greater capabilities, basically in regards to when Harrington has basically cut some services that we're all aware of, OB, GYN, cath lab, which they've never had at Harrington, but we're recognizing in the field, right from your door or from your home, with the cardiac monitor, we can put you on that monitor and bring you directly right to UMass or St. Vincent's. So we're crossing a step of not going to Harrington and delaying a little bit of care. So basically what we're doing, we're doing really good medicine out in the field. So another one of the factors is to consider is that the recall staff, when the shift falls below four, and I've always said to you guys, you know, we do have six per group, we have four groups. Generally, we do have four members on every shift, I mean, excuse me, when we do go down to four members, that's either because we have vacation time, personal time, or IOD. So when we do have those situations happening, that is a greater need to have people come back on the recall list, recall calls, which definitely isn't happening for many reasons. As recently as today, we had, the staff was at five. Two of our ambulances were on calls. A third call came in for an unresponsive person with CPR being performed at a local facility. We toned out our off-duty personnel. That one, actually Lieutenant, that was working, he was the only one left in town. He, at this point, went over to that facility and started care as best he could by being by himself until Sturbridge Ambulance could get there with almost a 20-minute ETA. So Lieutenant Kalani was, if they were at four today, in a round scope of things, if we were at four today, both ambulances would have been tied up. Nobody would have backfilled the station because that's not happening. We would have had to tone it again for extra help, for recall staff to come back in or the call department, and we would still call mutual aid. The problem is, is that even if the ambulance is coming from another town, it's anywhere between 15 and 20 minutes for someone to get here. So it's kind of serious. That's pretty much it on regards to the need for it. I have a lot more information in the study that I put together, which you'll be getting soon. But the informational things that we like to push forward, as the deputy put together a very short slide presentation, I believe you guys all have a copy of it, so if you like to follow along, and then we can open up for questions.
All right. Thank you for taking the time with us this evening. So I'm going to go through some of these slides as the chief brought, went over the information to some degree already. As you're aware, we're funded for six members in each shift, and we go down to a minimum of four. At this point, and for many years in the past, we do not backfill until we hit that level of four, go below that level of four. We do not regularly backfill for vacation. We do not regularly backfill for sick leave or personal time. It's only when the shift falls below a certain level. So what this slide shows you here is what percentage of time that we are actually at a staffing level. Some of the early, this is the last 18 months that we've been tracking this data, the first few months from July of 20, and those couple there, they're a little skewed because we were also receiving CARES Act funds during the height of the pandemic. So we actually were staffed fairly well at that point. What these come down to for averages, the amount of time that we're actually at six people when we start the day is 15%. So when you cut that down, it's about 50 days out of the year that we actually have six people that are working on the floor. The majority of the time, we spend at five, when it comes down to about 52% of the time, and at four is about 33% of the time. So about 80% of the time, 85% of the time, we're actually at four or five members. So 50 days a year, we're actually at full staff. So what are the things that we're facing? We've talked about it in the past, just last year, we have more than 200 housing units that are coming up online. The first 50 of those are actually going to start opening up in the next few months with the Wells Project. They're just a few months out from turning it over to the project owners. So our estimates were, just for that facility, is probably going to add a half a call a day just for that one facility. By the time the other projects come up online, then we'll be adding multiple calls a day just for those facilities. If we have the police academy coming to the community and ramping up their services, we're going to have more people there, more demand, more needs. We've lost 65 calls to mutual aid so far through the year of '21. We were able to cut down on that, and we were actually picking up quite a few calls in surrounding communities. It goes in cycles. We'll end up going mutually aid to Sturbridge, Charlton will come into our town. It goes in cycles, but we lost 65 calls last year. The chief's recall capacity discussion, just in the month of December, there were 46 times when we tried to recall personnel, and we only got that covered 27 times. So those other instances, we either didn't have enough people or none at all in the station during the time until those calls were cleared up. So we're looking to add four employees, one to each shift, and these are the costs. This is fully federally funded again this year. There's $560 million. When it goes across the country, it doesn't go very far. Last year, for an example, Boston got $24 million, and Boston's gotten $40 million in the life of these grant programs and put on well over 100 people. We're asking for four. We've asked for it three times in the past. We haven't got it. It's very frustrating. We're going to continue to ask for it, especially when it's fully funded by the government. So the total cost and request that we're looking for from the federal government is And if we are successful with that, we'll bring it back to you for accepting the grant. And those positions do not need to be retained after the three-year performance period, so we are not locked in to those employees afterwards. The numbers that are up there, they account for the salary, the insurance, FICA stipends, all of that, and that's what gets figured into it. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Katrona and Counselor Steve.
Thank you, just really quickly, thank you for your persistence with this several times. I've supported it in the past, I'll certainly support it again this evening. Do they give, is there a reason why we've been denied?
They do not go into the individual reasons why. It's a very competitive grant. They basically take a couple hundred guys, put them into a hotel, and make them read 50,000 applications. We have, this last year, the grant was reviewed by the grant writer, which was, excuse me, successful, in Webster, in obtaining eight members. He read our grant, said that we weren't missing anything, so.
Again, thank you for your persistence.
Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor? Great. Counselor Steve.
Thank you. You grabbed one of the questions I was going to ask. And the other one is, I was curious, looking at your time percentage chart, and I noticed you have several zeros for the sixes. What happened with those three months where you didn't have anybody that were six, you never saw six people?
Those were months of vacation time as high. We've had a member since the summer of this past year who's been out injured on duty, sick leave. We've had members out with COVID. Those were, where those came in.
That's kind of what I figured. Okay.
Anyone else? Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much, guys. Good luck.
Very good. Question number, agenda item number 20, discuss COVID-19 update and take any action thereof, Mr. Manager. I believe you can start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had our bi-weekly meeting today, just, we touch base at a minimum every other week with Mr. Pelletier, department heads, Harrington Hospital, the Southbridge Public Schools, just to make sure we're all on the same page with regard to what we're doing with COVID, see what anybody needs, how we could help each other out. One of the things that came up today is we're looking at the, you know, the information coming out of the World Health Organization, as well as, you know, federal government, CDC, Dr. Fauci, talking about the fact that we may be at the peak or slowly starting on the downside. Those seem to be some of the trends you're seeing at state level in Europe and elsewhere. The unfortunate part is, talking to Mr. Pelletier, he's still seeing 40 to 45 cases a day. They had a peak the other day of 69 cases. The last week, excuse me, the last 14 days, he tested, I believe, over, well, several thousand people, and he had a positivity rate of 30%. So we're still seeing a large number of cases here in Southbridge. Everybody is still continuing to work diligently, making sure they're social distancing and wearing masks. Dr. Vilar indicated, you know, they'll continue to work in the right direction. He said, we appear to be on the right trajectory, but unfortunately, as some of us talked before the meeting, it appears many of us have a date with COVID, and that's Dr. Vilar's quote, because as I talk to some counselors, I have a family member who's vaccinated and boosted and came down with COVID. So despite wearing masks and social distancing, so there seems to be a change of focus on some of the contact tracing. They're now looking to focus on seniors, congregant housing, schools, and college-age students. Mr. Pelletier did meet with me today about trying to get some additional monies for contact tracing. He previously funded this using the CARES Act. He previously funded this using the CARES Act. The ARPA funds are allowed to be used for accommodating and dealing with the pandemic emergency. So you may see coming to EHS a request to use some of the ARPA funds to continue the focused contact tracing. As I indicated before, we've been having vaccination clinics. We had one for school employees, town hall employees. School was very well attended, the town was reasonably well attended. They're looking to do another clinic townwide. They'll have at least 200 doses that they can administer. They're going to do it on February 19th. Just waiting to find out whether there's going to be a pre-registration required, and we will put that up on the website. So we're still not having a significant problem with internal exposures, but one thing Mr. Pelletier wanted to point out, that he has had, or had to make notice of seven deaths due to COVID since December, and six came since December 30th, he indicated. So it is still a problem, and we're, we'll continue with the mask mandate. We'll revisit it again in two weeks. We want to see some change in that positivity trend. And again, we're working in solidarity with the schools to ensure that we're having consistent policy. I will say on a positive note, firefighter Edwards, who handles some of our emergency management, was on today, that he was able to secure some additional PPE. He's getting, I believe, 1,500 additional masks and gowns, and we offered to share some of that with Harrington Hospital, as we've had a great partnership with them throughout. So that's pretty much the COVID update I have for right now. Just remind people to be vigilant and wear their masks and social distance and get vaccinated if you choose to do so, and keep an eye out on our website for February 19th if you want to get vaccinated. And one last, there is still testing. I think if you go through Harrington Hospital, you can still get tested at one of their sites. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counselor Jovan.
Through you. I just have one question. We had agreed that we would hold remote meetings for all boards, commissions, subcommittees till this date, until we reevaluate it. Are we going to continue with that for another two weeks or go back to in-person? It's a question. I don't know.
Well, that, I guess that was voted on by the council. We can discuss it right now and go further from there. Counselor Steve, then Counselor Katrona.
That's the question I was going to ask.
Okay. Counselor Katrona, then Counselor Ryan.
So I would like to make the motion that we continue, that we continue what we have been doing for the next, next two weeks.
Get to the mic. Get to the mic.
I said, "I'm going to move that we continue what we have been doing for the next two weeks."
Second.
Okay, we have our motion and a second discussion. Counselor. Do you wish to discuss? Okay. Counselor Katrona, then Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, I was not present at the January 5th meeting. Unfortunately, I did have COVID, and I would have liked to have attended the meeting remotely, although that wasn't the will of this council. And we do have, there is updated guidance from the governor that's, and he's extended that guidance through April 1st, 2022. And yet, this council doesn't want to adhere to that. So I would ask my fellow counselors, it's not that we all go remote, whether it's one person, two person, to go, we have the ability. I've spoken to cable. We can go remote. One person can call in, two persons, three persons. And it's not because one person might be out of state. It's not because someone may be not able to attend a meeting because they're sick or they have something else. There are other communities around us where business persons travel. But speaking to us in particular, the, again, the governor's guidance is that we've, if we wanted to follow it, we could until April 1st, 2022, and it's an executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. It's been read. So I guess I'm asking my fellow counselors to consider remote meetings, remote participation, participation, hybrid. One more time. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Dow.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I support keeping it as is at this point. I think it's worked pretty well. I mean, we've been functioning pretty well. If we're going to have further discussion about all of them, I'll talk about that then, but I think this is working for now. I was also not here. I also got COVID, and I did everything possible, you know? I've said this weeks before when we were first discussing this. There could be, you know, this is spreading like wildfire, and we, as a public body, need to take public health as paramount first. At least, that's my perspective. And I'm going to continue to support the action of having subcommittee meetings be remote at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I agree with Counselor Ryan, but I think it should be all have a right to attend either town council, be able to do remote too as well. If one of the council's sick or, or he can't attend for any reason, it should be able to dial in and attend the meeting. I mean, we can still come meet here, but it should be access to the public and other members if want to attend on the, on the meeting too. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Ozil.
I don't think anybody wants to hear my opinion. The regular council meeting, I think, should be held in the chamber. We have distancing, we have seating. You want to take precautions, take precautions. The government has scared the daylights out of the human race over, over COVID, and it is serious. But the thing is, they're going to find out in the end, after all these, it's 14 feet, no, it's three feet, no, it's six feet, 12 days, no, this is bad, this is good, the blue mask doesn't work, you gotta have an N95. I've been sitting back, I couldn't tell you one responsible person that came up with the same answer twice. So that's why I'm skeptical. Everybody wants to yell, "I want to do this, this, this." That's fine. I respect everybody. When someone, I come into the town hall, and someone says, "Well, how come you don't have a mask?" I put a mask on. But I, I, I'm sorry, they don't work. You're fooling yourself. Unless it's an N95, you're fooling yourself. So for my, for myself, I would like to have the council meetings in here where the people can come into the house of people. Subcommittee meetings are limited. By nature, they're limited. There are not a lot of people in subcommittee. It's usually department heads going in and stuff. But again, you know, if you're sick, if I have COVID, last thing I want to do is put myself on TV and talk at the council meeting. I wouldn't be resting, okay? Anybody that's had COVID, I haven't had it. Anybody that has COVID, you know, they, they say, "My lungs, I can't breathe." And you want to come to a council meeting via the tube? No. I just don't even believe that. Thank you.
Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. I didn't make it quick. I think over, again, this was a short-term solution. We do see the numbers coming down, I think, another two weeks for subcommittee meetings and other boards and commissions to be held remotely. I'm not, I think we had this conversation two weeks ago about the hybrid approach. Yeah, cable can do that for these meetings. However, for a subcommittee meeting, you can't do a hybrid. It's, it's virtually impossible for them to do a hybrid because of, of who's going to be here, who's going to be gone. I mean, the nights, they have to be here. They already talked tonight about staffing issues. But I think the last two weeks worked pretty, pretty, pretty well. We're talking two more weeks, see what the numbers are, and just continue marching the way we have. That's my recommendation. I don't think, I think school committee's not going to meet till after our meeting anyway. So it really is, we're only talking one council meeting and then, and a couple of subcommittee meetings. Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm not saying to meet here, but it should be the public and anybody able to access to the meeting online. I'm not saying to eliminate it completely. We're still going to meet here, but we should have, you can't tell the public, "Don't attend" or not scared of their life or, or getting sick from anything. But I think they should still have access if they want to talk to the opinion or they have some recommendation, or they should be able to dial in and attend the meeting, I guess. That's my opinion too.
Anyone else? Okay. The motion on the floor is to maintain status quo for another two weeks, I believe. Okay.
I want to make a motion, include it the town council as well.
Second. I'm not clear on what it is you're amending.
The motion to include it, be able to attend the meeting for the town council online as well.
So you're, you're saying you want us to amend?
No, that's the motion on the table.
He just wants to add.
He's just asking to add, yeah.
Yeah, but he wants to add it to be a hybrid model, is that correct? Is that what you're recommending? Are you, or are you recommending that we have a full remote meeting? Is that what the motion is right now for subcommittees?
Hybrid, you're talking about hybrid.
Yeah. That's what I'm pretty sure you're talking about, a hybrid model. And we're talking about remote right now. No in-person in here.
Make a motion to be able to continue meeting and add it the town council online for the public if they like to be able to attend any meeting too, so. I don't know. You do the rest. I think you understand.
He just wants to add hybrid to the, for the town council meeting only. The rest of them are all remote. That's all. That's what he wants to add.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to amend the motion to include the meeting as being hy, the town council meeting as being hybrid, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Those against? Motion passes. To amend the question.
Guys, if you want to make, if you want to be clear.
Certainly.
So all subcommittee meetings would be held remotely?
Yep.
And the town council meeting, one and only next town council meeting, until we revisit it, would be a hybrid meeting?
Yes. That's the way I understand it.
Is that, is that, I just want to make clear.
No, that's the way I understand it.
Because if we decide to have an executive session, because I don't know if I want to go into executive session this evening, with all due respect to Mr. McCall, at 11:30 at night to talk about an item, and we're going to do remote executive session next meeting, I, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I'm just asking for a point of clarification.
Executive session is completely different, but the motion has already passed. We can meet here, but the public and other people, they have access to the, to the online. I don't, I don't see what the big deal. We used to do it in the past too.
Okay.
That's what was, my motion was, not to go hyper completely, was we be meeting here, but anybody like to attend online, he'd be able to, to go online too and attend.
That's fine.
Well, we did that in the past.
That's hybrid. That's a hybrid.
Not 100%. It was meeting here, those people was able to attend on the, on, on, online as well. So it wasn't.
The hybrid, we did that.
Yeah, that's what we just did. That's exactly. That's what we just voted on.
Any for, Mr. Manager?
Not to add confusion, but I think by the way you did that, you left the school committee meeting solely in chambers. Was that your intent, or do you want to make it consistent? I'm not trying to add at this hour any confusion, but I, you might want to reconsider and imply the hybrid to the school committee and give that option there as well if you're going to do it to the council. Because otherwise, you're mandating them here in the chambers, because that's what you did the previous time. Just pointing that out.
Sure. Point taken. Do we know when the school committee meeting is meeting next?
I'm looking that up. They're typically the second, but there's nothing posted right now, so. We meet on the 7th. I believe they would be the 8th.
So then it wouldn't have any effect at this point, because we'll be, we'll be revisiting this on the 8th. So, all right. Okay. There's an amended motion on the floor. And a second. We voted on the amendment, but now we're going to vote on the original motion.
That's amended.
Oh, that's amended. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on?
Any ready to have bring?
Any questions?
No. What are we voting on? There was no motion to begin with. It was just discussion, right?
No, there was a motion.
No, there was a motion.
There was a motion. Is everyone clear?
Yep.
Very well. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Those against? Three. Motion passes five to three.
Mr. Chairman, I would just, just as a point of information.
Certainly.
I don't know if anybody's seen my postings. You're supposed to put at the beginning of your, for any subcommittee chairman, your announcement when you call the meeting to order, there's supposed to be a blurb that says how people can participate in your meeting. Nobody else has done that in the remote meetings except for my meeting, so make sure that you get it done. It's been part of the law. It's been part of the procedures.
It wasn't on my agenda, so I just forgot.
I'm suspending all PPP meetings for two weeks. Don't call me.
That's prejudice.
All right. Okay, okay. Counselors forum. Counselor Mike Hettig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last time I asked about the cable contract, the only reason I want to talk about it again is because if they're not, if Charter is not going to talk to you about it, then maybe we should start thinking about some other cable operator, or even, I'm starting to think maybe Counselor Steve's has a good idea about running our own. But I think that they should come to the table and start discussing the contract. If not, well, there's Comcast, I think. I think we could go with someone else. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, because you brought up the Tuesday night town hall, to me, that's kind of a, not a good night to do that, because the way it is now, Thursday night, they meet late, but Friday's only half a day, so it's not so bad when you, you're going to work 12 hours Thursday night. You come in Friday, you only have to do a half day. If you do it on Tuesday night, well, the next day, they got to work a full eight hours. So I just think it's something that should be considered when changing it to Tuesday night. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To the citizens, to the taxpayers of this community, good evening. It's been a long night, as most of us know. To the taxpayers that voted me into this seat, I want to say, my work is now taking me occasionally out of state. As any normal person would certainly do, I go where the work is. I still maintain my presence in Southbridge. I'll still watch over your tax dollars, and I will attend meetings as often as I possibly can. Difficult decisions, but I've always watched for your tax dollars. I'm committed for that reason. I am requesting the residents in this community, we do have an election coming up in June, please pull nomination papers, and let's see some, 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 some new faces on council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counselor Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one quick thing, through you to the manager. I was curious if a stat, the status of the MVP process and the dates for, if we figured out any dates for the future forums for that process? The municipal vulnerability grant process?
So I'll have to get the specifics from Mr. Rumsey, but there's usually two phases. You get the first, the planning grant and the, the action grant. There's two different grants. And we were supposed to be getting a consultant with the money for, to come up with the plan, and they were supposed to come out and meet with us. I'll have to get the status of that for you. I can get it in email, but also make it an announcement next time we're here, so we know.
Okay. And specifically, when, when the dates for those forums are? Thanks.
Very good. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, I just wanted to mention, I've noticed this for a little bit now, and I noticed it again tonight. One of the flashing beacons on the crosswalk across from Renton Center on Main Street does not work. It worked for one day, maybe two, and then stopped working. Only one side has worked, and I've been, oh, maybe they'll catch it, but it's still working on it. still working on it, and now everything's done, and it's, it's still that way. Um, so if the point is to have flashing beacon so everybody's safe, if one of them's immediately out, that's not very safe. So, uh, I would like, um, if, some follow-up on that. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Azal.
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Dow.
I won't say for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. Just real quickly, um, to echo Counselor Katrona, papers are out for elections. Um, town of seventeen thousand people, I hope that some other individuals get involved in the government. There's a bunch of, uh, positions available for election, not just town council, but other, uh, other boards and committees. Um, it's your town. If you're concerned about tax dollars, don't sit behind the keyboard and talk and complain about everything. Get out and participate in your government. Um, new faces are always good in council. Old faces are good all, as well. Doesn't mean I'm running, just means that, you know, you put a lot of hard work into it, so. Um, the MPTC program that I tend, I did intend with other counselors, and that's kudos to all that worked hard, especially Chief Woodson, because I know he was part of that process, so a lot of recognition should go to Chief Woodson, because he was, uh, part of the chief's group that, uh, got that to the town of Southbridge. I think, long-term, that's gonna be a great benefit. Earlier this evening, we had an individual that addressed the town council, um, stating that he has a First Amendment right. Absolutely, people have a First Amendment right to speak. This council didn't make any rule, establish any prohibition for him speaking. He was allowed to speak. However, it is also our duty to make sure that what is being said out to the public is accurate information. So nobody was stopping any individual. I will never stop any of it, individual. I think, on my tenure as chair of the council, I never stopped anybody from speaking before town council, except doing it in a respectful manner. And, uh, you don't call out counselors. If, if, you know, if we do something wrong, yeah, you call us out, but there are decisions that we make that you may not find popular, um, but we do the best decisions. So, um, again, we'll never infringe on anybody's right to address this council or this community. Um, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Next regular council meeting is Monday, February seventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM here in McKinnon Council Chambers. Item number twenty-three, vote to enter into executive session pursuant to match general law chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A two, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager. The town council will adjourn from executive session and will not reconvene in open session.
I don't, in deference, I know the town manager, and we had this conversation, but it, it is eleven forty-five this evening. I don't know about anybody else. I do have to go to work.
I agree.
In the morning. Um, if we are setting up a special town council meeting.
I have to go to work. I have an eight o'clock F A.
I, I just won't say, at least you get paid to come in for tomorrow morning. I do, I do not. I do welcome the conversation with the town manager on his contract, but I would respectfully, hopefully, he would be gracious enough to allow us to postpone this, because I know I get very angry, and I, I don't want to get angry at night and say something that I might regret when you get tied in negotiations. I've been on that grumpy side on negotiations, and it's not a good thing. So I, I would hope the town manager would recognize that. I don't have any problem. If we're gonna call a council meeting in the hole to discuss the, um, um, the charter, you know, perhaps call, uh, executive session before we do that, a half hour before, that we can, can talk about this. Um, counsel, perhaps Counsel Adams would be present as well, because he's not here this evening. So I, I would just ask the town manager if that, that would be okay with him.
He's thinking. He says, he says I never smile.
There is no, there is no negotiation on this either.
Because I know how I'm gonna vote about going to the executive session. So you're asking me right now, I'm, given the hour, I mean, if we were to even take a fifteen-minute break before we start, because some people do that, you know, we're not starting till midnight, we're not getting out of here till one o'clock. So I would agree, it probably does not make sense at this hour, um, since many of us will be starting at eight or before eight tomorrow.
So then I believe I need a motion to, uh, pass this over?
We could just postpone it. I would make a motion to postpone, I would make a motion to postpone this item, executive session, to either a council meeting in the hole, before the council meeting in the hole, if you so choose to schedule it, or until February seventh.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Very good.
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All those in favor?